Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this evening City of Uniontown's regular city council meeting for order August 3, 2023 at 5:00 p.m.
Mr. Billy?
Here.
Mr. Basaki?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Here.
Mr. Shuhon?
Here.
Mayor Gurke?
Here. All rise from the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any comments on agenda items only? Yes, sir. Go ahead. Go to the podium and state your name and your address, please.
I'm Pastor Don Henderson, 135 South Beeson Avenue. My back porch looks out over Bailey Park. And I've been asked to be a mouthpiece for two groups, a group of ladies, a group of men. We play tennis in the Union Town area. And one of the things that we're excited about is the things that are happening at Bailey Park. And we heard rumors that there may be courts going in. And what we've seen in the area is a loss, a loss of a lot of courts over our age, over a long time. And our concern is, is that we not lose tennis in the Union Town area. I happen to know that there's nothing, no tennis courts actually in Union Town itself. We go all over the area to find courts. And so it would make us extremely giddy if a tennis court, devoted tennis court, was included in plans for Bailey Park. And I believe that it's a responsibility of us as citizens to give our children opportunities to try all the sports, you know, and they can go, they can go play baseball. We have baseball fields. They can do football in a yard. But tennis is something that takes a devoted court. We try and play at times on one of the courts in the general Union Town area, and we call it the Grand Canyon runs through it, all right? And the Y just took one of the courts away up there and didn't do anything to improve the tennis court. They put in pickleball. Now, we're not against pickleball. We actually have some of our players here who, they also play pickleball. But our concern is, is that the children and tennis is older than baseball, okay? It's almost 500 years old. They've tracked it back. And so I believe that every child should get an opportunity to put a tennis racket in their hand and try it. And my question is, where does, where does the high school do that? Because we don't have any courts proper. So again, I've been asked by about 20 people, our groups, ladies and men, to encourage you to include a devoted tennis court to whatever the plans are for Bailey Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on agenda items only? Chief DeWitt?
Evening, everybody. So there's a couple of them, just to be as open to the public as possible with a little bit of explanation because there are some financial stuff on this. That's why I want to explain it before you get into votes, so you can understand what you're seeing. Item number 177 is to approve a payment of a $1,200 retention bonus. This retention bonus was wrote. It's for all the police officers in the city and our administrative staff member that we currently have. This was included in our grant. It's state-funded. It's not any money out of the city coffers. It's money that the city will pay out, will get back in a grant reallocation. This was originally put on by, at the time it would have been the, well, now the governor. He was the AG, was requesting money for a heroes fund, $1,200 for anyone who worked through COVID. They rolled that into the local law enforcement grant that we got approved, and it was approved for $1,200, and it's due for payments for anyone that has more than six months of service. So that's due. That's where that money's coming from. 178 is the process for a new applicant hiring list. Our current list is expired. As you go further on, you'll see that we're losing one officer. And we got the anticipated loss of another one to retirement by the end of the year. And an additional one who's going to be leaving to go to the state police. He's number 13 overall in the state right now in the state police process. So it's pretty much a foregone conclusion that he's going to get hired by PSP. So this list will prepare us for future losses and able to appoint, should city council find it appropriate for us to appoint police officers to those vacant positions down the road. And then item number 182 is to promote Patrolman Curtis DeFour to the rank of corporal. One of our corporals is leaving the department. Just a little background on DeFour. Patrolman Curtis DeFour has been a member of the Union Town City Police Department for 13 years. He's currently seated as the highest eligible candidate on the corporal list, which is certified by our Civil Service Commission. Patrolman DeFour possesses superior supervisory skills that he obtained as a police officer and as a member of the United States Armed Services. DeFour served multiple combat tours to countries abroad as a member of the United States Army. Patrolman DeFour is actively enlisted in the Pennsylvania Army National Guard and currently holds the rank of Sergeant Major. This rank is the highest rank that an enlisted member can obtain. I'm proud of you for that. You worked two years while you were a police officer here to obtain that. So good on you, and thank you for your service for that. I am confident that DeFour will move our department forward as a first-line supervisor for the Union Town City Police Department. And I ask you this evening to consider Patrolman DeFour be promoted to corporal with an effective date of August 7. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments on agenda items only?
Actually, I do. Do I have to go up there? Do I go up there for it? Okay. John can't make it tonight, so I just wanted to touch on a couple of things on the agenda here. We have a garage that has four doors on it. The garage doors have fallen off. The rollers are coming off. It's just, they're in bad shape. There's four doors. So we're trying to do just two of them now, at least, to get some, you know, progress done in these garages. They're actually, it's a safety hazard as bad as they are. So that's why those two garage doors are on there. And the weed killer is just something that we use as a stock item throughout the year to take care of the parks and wherever we are. So that's what those two things are on there for. And as far as the part-time help for the sewage department, we had part-time help. That was last year, so this is actually filling a vacancy that we've had for quite a long time. Elaine can really use the help, so I just wanted to touch basis on these three things. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Again, any other comments on agenda items only? If not, we had an executive session at 4:30 today for legal and personnel matters. I have a few notes to go over with you and just to bring you up to speed what's going on in the city. This past month, I was at Bailey Park one evening, and there were a few people that came around. We just had an impromptu meeting and talked about reorganizing the Parks and Recs Board. And on item number 166, we're starting to get the Parks and Recs Board reorganized. And it was great just to exchange ideas and what the thoughts were. And people were excited about what's going on in the city and the parks in general. Met with John McCune's group. I can't remember the name of his group, but he has a group of people that are going around cleaning the city up. And we had approved them, I think, two months ago. And they're painting and taking, cleaning up weeds. And it was a great program, and I just want to thank John for making this program available to the city. The signs that welcome people to the city and probably some directional signs, they're starting to be replaced throughout the city. And the county's helped to coordinate and fund these signs. And I want to thank the street department for starting to get these signs up, and you'll see them going up in the near future. Met with Nemecolin this week. Joe Walkus and I had the opportunity to go up and meet with the people at Nemecolin, and they're planning to have another back-to-school event like we had last year. And this is going to take place on Wednesday, September 20, at Bailey Park. This will be the second time that they came down. And the first one was a real success, even though it rained all day. But a lot of people had a lot of good times. And highlight this event is that the Nemecolin softball team will play our police and fire and EMT. We lost last year, but we're looking to revenge that loss. And there'll be a lot more activities going on there. So if you get a chance, come on down. I don't have the exact times, but I would imagine it's between 3:00 and 7:00 at Bailey Park on the 20th of September. It's a good family program. Talking about family activities, this past Tuesday night, I want to thank Steve Strange from the East End Community Center for putting on the national night out at Grant Street, excuse me. Had a lot of people out, and again, police and fire, and a lot of people were there. It was great for the family to get out. And again, thanks to Steve Strange and all his, he had a number of people that helped him. And if I'd start naming them, I'd miss a number of them, so I'm just going to mention Steve. And one more thing I got to bring to our attention is in two weeks, not this weekend, but next weekend, the Italian Festival returns to downtown Union Town on Main Street on the 12th and 13th of August. And it's sponsored by the Sons of Italy. So please try to get out and support the Sons of Italy and support our city. And that's about all I have. Thank you.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to receive the report of the treasurer for the month of July 2023, being the same as hereby received and filed. Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Union Town for July 2023 invoices. General Fund, $101,061.19. Sewer Fund, $122,079.91. Recreation, $8,062.68. Highway, $3,332.12. Off-Street, $3,879.91. Recycling, $1,814.157. Library, $60,769.41. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to accept the minutes of the July 6, 2023, regular council meeting, be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve the refund for the following sewage customer. This customer has overpaid sewage account after the termination of service for Claire at Lowly at 73 East Highland Avenue in the amount of $132. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
This next resolution is for appointment for the Union Town Redevelopment Authority Board. And there are three letters of interest.
So do we have anybody in the audience that, I see we have one person, that has sent in a letter of interest? I'd like to, after reviewing all these, everybody that's sent in a letter of interest, they all bring something different, unique, and very important to the table. And I think, you know, as meetings pass, you've seen that, you know, when we're trying to fill this position, we're trying to look for somebody that is the most qualified, that brings the most to the table. And the person that I'm getting ready to nominate, even is, I was, threw my name in the hat as well. This person, if this person would have been there at the same time, I would have stepped aside and threw my vote, my support to this person as well. I'd like to go ahead and, at this time, go ahead and nominate Mark Raifel for the Redevelopment Authority.
I second.
And also was saying that, you know, I'd like to thank the other two that did put their applications, the interest, the letters of interest in, and also to encourage them to move forward with other boards that we're going to have as well.
I'd like to hear.
Yeah. And later in the meeting here, we're getting ready to start in a direction with the rec board. And I think that that, for even both of the other applicants, letters of interest, I think that they would also really be a very important part to the park and into the future of that.
And where can people access that, that information and what is available?
Well, that's going to be up to the city administrative office.
That's on their website?
And to release this, yeah.
It's on the website, right?
It's on the website. It might not be updated since we've made a couple of appointments.
That'd be great, so that people can look it up on the website, and then they can, that would be wonderful, yes.
Okay, be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to appoint Mark Raifel to the Union Town Redevelopment Authority Board for a five-year term from July 1, 2023, to July 1, 2028. Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey? Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Yep. I also feel that with Mark's experience, he will do a fine job on that board.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to reactivate the Parks and Recreation Board and to begin to accept letters of interest for set board. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes, and like the mayor stated at the beginning of the meeting, that who's ever interested, please send a letter of interest for our Parks and Recreation Board, so we can get that going. And just like to thank you in the future, right now, for doing that, so, yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
I'm glad to see this reactivated, so yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
So just for council, the Third Class City Code requires that council approve that board by ordinance. So this goes ahead and moves forward to allow the city to solicit letters. In the next couple of months, we'll have that ordinance for you guys to actually formally introduce and then approve. So then you'll be in a position to appoint to that board here in the October meeting. Thanks, Tim.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the City of Union Town to paint crosswalks at Fayette County Community Action across 108 North Beeson Avenue, across from 140 North Beeson Avenue, across to 137 North Beeson Avenue, the handicapped apron and crosswalk at the intersection of North Beeson Avenue and Maple Street. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve the request of the NAACP of Fayette County to rename Seeright Avenue to Reverend James Lawson Jr. and Reverend James Lawson Sr. Boulevard in honor of his tireless contributions to the civil rights nonviolent movement. Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize waiving daily fees, parking fees, in the Penn Street parking garage for George's Jewelry on August 5, 2023, for their Summer Customer Appreciation Day event. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize waiving daily parking fees in city garages for the Sons of Italy-sponsored Italian festivals on August 12 and August 13, 2023. Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to hire Damian Moreno part-time, up to 29 hours per week, in the Department of Public Work at an hourly rate of $1,440.
I've got something real quick to say, but sorry, I forgot to mention this in the comments first. I know people were tired of hearing me say it, being shorthanded in the street and sewage department. Just lost another guy to an injury, and I'm not sure when he's going to be back. It's pretty serious, so our thoughts go out to him. But yet, we're down another person, so we really need this. So I just want to let everyone know that this is, be much appreciated.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
The next resolution is to accept sealed bids for paving of city streets. We have received three bids that are still fielded. This one is for redstone excavating.
So we have redstone excavating. Submit a bid at $115,566.75 for the scope of work.
This is from El Grande Industries.
Okay, we have a submitted bid from El Grande at $118,549.80 for the scope of work.
Cost of build construction?
Cost of build construction. Okay, so we have a bid submitted from Costable, $102,766.77.
Well, I'll make a motion to take the lowest bid from Costable Construction.
I'll second that.
For $102,766 and whatever the cents were.
Seventy-seven?
Seventy-seven cents.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve the sealed bid for paving of city streets from Costable Construction in the amount of $102,766.77. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase and installation of two 10-foot, 2-inch by 14-foot garage doors with openers for use as sanitary sewer garage from Budhak garage doors and electric operators at a cost of $9,100. Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Did we get any, did we search for any other bids or any other? Did we get any, did we search for any other bids or any other prices to see if we might be able to get these at a better price?
You know what, I don't know if you actually did that, so.
I don't know.
Actually, that's a good question. Maybe we should just table this for now.
I think you've already secured the votes, so I'm not going to vote no.
Works for me.
Just a minute, so this is under the threshold where legally required.
That's what I had thought, I wasn't positive yet.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize purchase of Killzall Weed Killer from Producer Supply Company in the amount of $2,630.30. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Do we know when we, when we, I think we purchased last year some of the weed killer. Do we, do you remember, do we remember whenever?
I do.
Yeah, was it last year or before?
It was last year.
Is this the same company?
I don't think it's the same company, I don't remember that, but I'm sure it's all going.
And John called around to see what he can get for the best prices for this stuff because he bought it in bulk. No.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, whereas under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development is authorized to extend financial assistance to communities for activities which will benefit low and moderate income families, aid in the elimination or prevention of slums or blight or other urgent community development needs. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, one, that the redevelopment authority of the City of Uniontown is hereby authorized to submit a revision request to PACDCED. A, for C000075685 to reduce code enforcement by $17,981 and increase Lemon Street Park activity by same amount. B, C000075232 to revise the scope of work for Lemon Street Park activity to include a pavilion trash receptacle and signage. No change to location or beneficiaries is proposed. Two, that the mayor on behalf of the City Council is authorized to execute all documents related to submission of the revision request. Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the low bid of $32,410.6 from RT Designs 38 for ink car computers and mounts for police vehicles. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve payment, $1,200 retention bonus from LLE grant funds to each Uniontown Police Officer and administrative staff. Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize advertisement and process for a new police applicant hiring list. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve up to $1,000 for police officer firearms training. Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the resignation of Nicholas A. Zaco from the Uniontown Police Department effective September 20, September 4, 2023. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the memorandum of agreement between the City of Uniontown and the Teamsters Local Union 941. Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to promote Patrolman Curtis DeFord to the rank of police corporal effective August 7, 2023. Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to accept the resignation of Mark John as consultant to the City of Uniontown effective July 7, 2023. Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to approve the recommendation of the City of Uniontown Pension Committee to award PFM as the investment manager for the City of Uniontown's Fire and Police Pension Plan, contingent upon arriving at contract terms with PFM and the suitable cost of. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown to authorize the city clerk to advertise for a part-time clerk position in the Sewage Office and the Office of Account and Finance, both at an hourly rate of $13.50 for up to 29 hours per week. Councilman Basaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
I want to at this time turn this meeting over to Chief DeWitt for a moment, please. Now we'll turn to the monthly reports. The Director of Redevelopment Authority, does someone have a report?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and I'll go ahead and speak on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Billy.
The Director is off, on vacation, can make it today's meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and read a report that, that Director Simmons has wrote tonight. The Community Development Block Grant Program, we, we had a status meeting on July 20, 2023. The next meeting that we will be having will be August 17, 2023. We have a quick glance review sheet which is, was provided to council members. If not, we can, if you have any questions on that, we can revert back to the Director after she comes back from vacation. Just real quick, though, a quick glance at this project update, the, and this is something that we had, you know, we had dealt with in the meeting today. Lemon Street Playground Project Award, July 19, the work began, it began in the next couple of weeks. We have demolition of 82 Lemon, 55 Lennox, 84 Murray, 39 Winona. Those are under environmental reviews and they're in the, in the process. We have the 2023 CBG application, this will be due Friday, October 27, 2023. Allocation for that is going to be $311,565 with the 18% administration fee. The first hearing, this is really important for the community, the first hearing is going to be on August 9 at 6:00 PM. This is going to be at the East End Community Center. This will also be streamed live on Facebook, WMBS. Again, that is August 9, and that's going to be at 6:00 PM. Now, they'll be discussing the modifications for Lemon Street Pavilion and also receiving project requests and comments on the CBG program as well. Expiring funds, projects are being vetted, the sewage and transportation committees met on July 27, 2023. At that moment, we discussed sewage deficiencies under review and also street paving that was under review. The Grant Street ADA Accessible Bathroom, the site visit has now been completed and they're moving on with that project. Home Investment Partnership Application, this is September 15, 2023. This is existing home, existing owner occupied housing rehabilitation, and this is to solicit interest from the public. So another, another meeting, you know, stuff that you want to express to the Redevelopment Authority and to council as well. Municipal Assistance Planning Grant, we are reviewing the comprehensive plan, it's under review by the Planning Commission. We meet August 9, 4:00 PM at City Hall. Blight remediation plan is to begin, this is a, they're going to be setting up a task force, so this is something for the public also to be, you know, be looking forward to put input in, and that again is blight remediation plan. Downtown Uniontown Business District partnership with the Redevelopment Authority, the cooperation agreement is in negotiations, and this deals with the local share account award for the strategic planning. Procurement of engineer services is underway, project inventory is ongoing with them, and Summer Conference Series, Story Square runs Thursday through August 24, so tonight is one of those as well. So that's what she has. And if, and each packet that we, each council person receive a letter in the breakdown, so again, if we have any questions for Crystal, the Director, you know, on this breakdown sheet, we can, we can get ahold of her once she returns back. That is the Director for the Redevelopment Authority, that's their, their monthly report.
Very, very good, Councilman Billy, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Billy. Fire Department, Pastor Winfrey?
This is from Chief Khan. The Uniontown Fire Department responded on the following incidents for the month of July, 2023. Ten fire related incidents, which included four building fires, one cooking fire, a find to the stove, three trash fires, one passenger vehicle fire, and one scorched burn, smoke, stair, but no active fire found. Twenty-seven rescue related incidents with 18 motor vehicle collisions, six of those with injuries, two emuls of ill and injured person from a vehicle, one animal rescue, one below grade rescue, four elevator rescues, and one extrication of entrapped victim from a vehicle collision. Nine hazardous condition incidents, including six power lines down, one carbon dioxide incident, one chemical spill, and one short electrical equipment incident. Twelve service related incidents, including six lockouts or gaining access for MS crews, three persons in distress incidents, one water leak, and two general public service incidents. Ten fire alarm activations, three witness fire drill in a public facility, which included faculty, staff training, pre-incident planning, and building refurbilization. Five public fire prevention education program, training conducted or taken for the month. The department had 89 man-hours of training for the month of July. Highlighting special training taken or conducted. Lithium battery class was held in another county fire company. Four of our personnel attended, including Assistant Chief Smith Berger, Career Fire Lee Berger, and Rick Berg, and volunteers Fred Bosick, Matt Burns, Dane Griffith, Hillary Griffith, Ryan Kmetz, and Paul Richardson. Lithium batteries hazards are a growing concern in the fire service. We are fortunate to have a number of personnel who have attended various training classes on them, which will help us combat these new hazards. Also, Chief Khan attended an on-campus course at the National Fire Academy in Maryland, the course being Incident Command for High-Rise Operations. Lastly, we have received approval from the Redevelopment Authority to use vacant structures slated for demolition for hands-on fire training, and are looking forward to that opportunity as they come available. Apparatus and equipment updates, we have two apparatus left that will be coming due for Pennsylvania vehicle inspection, one being due at month's end. All NFPA standard required equipment tests are complete for the year except one, which will be for the ground ladders and aero device. I've been in contact with the testing company regarding dates and will keep council informed, and will be asking for approval by resolution once we get dates and prices finalized, miscellaneous. A planning meeting was held at our central station to review and discuss the emergency action plan and special events planned for the upcoming Greater Uniontown Italian Festival. Attendance along with Fire Chief, one of the Assistant Chiefs, or the City Emergency Management Coordinator, City Police Chief and Captain, Chief, Assistant Chief of Fayette EMS, County Emergency Management Coordinator, and Police Chief and Risk Management Coordinator for the Uniontown Hospital. Event Chair Ron Romeo also attended. This is a very productive meeting, and I would personally like to thank EMA Coordinator Craig Crossley for drafting the plans and coordinating with the agencies. I feel moving forward, holding these planning meetings will be beneficial for any and all events held in the city and needs to happen regularly. This will enable us as a city to ensure safety to the, as to the event goes as well as having the ability to continue day-to-day services to the rest of our taxpayers. Personnel still continue to be involved in community events, which along with our outreach programs, public fire investigation, and pre-incident planning. National Fire Protection Week is just around the corner, coming this October. This year's theme is Cooking Safety Starts With You. We offer outreach and fire prevention activities all throughout the year. Please contact us with any questions or to schedule something. We also encourage the public to seek out more information regarding lithium battery safety as well. Lastly, don't forget that Thursday night is bingo at the social hall. The social hall, Dunbar Street starts at 6:45, but the doors opening at 5:00 PM. We appreciate all the community, community support, respectfully submitted by Scott A. Khan. Thank you. Thank you, trying to keep it shorter next time.
Thanks, Pastor. Police Department report, Chief DeWitt?
Very good, Councilman Winfrey.
Mayor, council, thank you for the votes and continued support of our department. I know the residents appreciate it as well. I'll keep it pretty short. During the month of July, the Uniontown Police Department responded to 789 calls for service, a breakdown of some of those calls included one homicide. service, a breakdown of some of those calls included one homicide that is pending a district attorney review for justification, one involuntary homicide due to negligent discharge of a firearm by a juvenile, twenty-three vehicle accidents, six assaults, forty welfare checks, thirty-five domestics, seven assist fire calls, ten disorderly conducts, twenty emergency medical assists, twelve assist other police, twelve harassments, three shots fired, nineteen alarms, seventy-eight suspicious persons, activities, vehicles, thirty-one thefts, fourteen public intoxication, and eighteen animal complaints. Officers made a total of fifty-six criminal arrests, issued thirty-one non-traffic citations, and fifty-four traffic citations. Officers conducted vehicle and foot patrols in city parks, as well as Jeep Skin Trails we do every, every month, every month. During the month of July, code enforcement closed eight cases, opened thirty-one new cases, the large majority of those being high grass, and is carrying over approximately thirty-two cases from June. Officer Camperd, who does code enforcement, is swamped, for lack of better words. It's a lot of work for one guy, and it's hard to keep up with the amount of cases that he has. He's doing a great job with the amount of work and all that we're asking one person to do. And honestly, one of those days, if you look at a five-day work week that Officer Camperd is working, one of those days, every day, is dedicated for him working general patrol on daylight shift to minimize, minimize the amount of overtime out with our shortages. So he's, he's really doing code four days out of the week with his workload. He's doing an outstanding job, but there is a lot of work, and I know it might seem insurmountable at times, but he is making some headway. Monday, fifteen, or fifteen body cams and four dash cams arrived, which were purchased on the grant money, with the grant money. We are currently awaiting for Motorola Solutions, who is the maker of our body cams, to conduct a site survey and installation of all equipment. I am hopeful that our body cam program will be fully operational by the end of 2023. As I stated before, this will result in a lot of positive changes in the way the department rolls, and also with legal issues. Statistically speaking, use of forces dropped by over seventy percent when a body cam policy's put in place with the body cam program, and lawsuits, whether realistic or frivolous, dropped by eighty-five percent. So, we are all looking forward to them, I can promise you that. Additionally, the Incor computers you had voted on are currently, that was done by poll of council, so we can get as much bang for our buck with the amount of money that we had. Those are currently on the ground somewhere in Pennsylvania. They are on, en route to us, and they will be installed by the end of 2023. I'll be hitting you guys next month, hopefully, for saying I need to get the internet put on those, so they are functional for us to use. That is all I have, does anyone have any questions? Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief DeWitt. Director of Public Works, Steve, would you happen to have a report?
John, had a last minute, something come up, he just, he had an emergency, couldn't make it. I don't have the numbers with me, so I'll just say that, like I mentioned before, we lost another guy to a serious injury, so our thoughts are with him. We're shorthanded again, I know people are tired of hearing it, so thank you for the support of getting this part-time guy in there. Once we looked into it and found out that it is the street department that's supposed to be picking up in the parks, we had a guy out there picking up the garbage. He happened to be the one that got hurt, so please bear with us, we're trying our best. I really do apologize, we've had nothing to sue or breaks, and they're just, just ragged, they just can't keep up. So just please bear with us, and I want to thank, there's been a few people at the table, I'm not gonna say names, but have been showing up and just picking up trash at the parks on their own time, lunchtimes, so I just wanna thank everyone that's been doing that. And that's about all I have for now, and thank you again for the support for the garage doors. The gentleman that hurt himself was trying to do something with work, and it could have been, you know, a safety problem, but it was just something that just happened, but these doors are definitely needed. They're, they're, they're in bad shape, so we just wanted to start with happens, so I just want to thank you for the support on those, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Bisaki.
So I have two things before we get out of here. After reviewing the 5K revenues and donations, we had one donation that was earmarked for Parks and Recs. I would like to make sure that that $755.60 goes to actual Parks and Recs, not into the general fund, which is an area that we, we are running low on right now, we are under $20,000 in the rec fund. So I, I would like to see, and I just wanna bring out the council's attention, I'd like to see that moved from the general fund line on over into the Parks and Recs, due to the memo stating for the City of Uniontown Parks and Recreation. This was a donation for a yard sale, which was also advertised on Facebook for the Parks and Recs Department, so I would like to see that go. Another thing, too, is, you know, I'm curious, you know, we got a lot of things going on in a lot of different departments, and, you know, and talking with, talking with the firemen, you know, Councilman Winfrey spends a lot of time at the fire department, the mayor, every morning, I see the mayor over, talking with the Chief of Police, so he's, he's making his rounds. Unfortunately, I am not able to make it into City Hall as much as I would like to with, with work hour conflicts. Joe, I know you're, I know Councilman Shuhon is very involved with the parks. Councilman Bisaki, how, how much time do you spend down at your departments?
The departments?
Yeah, I mean, how much, how much do you make it down to, to there to check it out? I mean, I know you're, you were talking about the garage doors and safety issues, do you actually get down to see these safety issues, and do you get down into those garages?
No, I rely on my Director to give me the right information, and he passes on pictures to me, and I talk to the guys on a regular basis, the other guys in the field. Unfortunately, on, just like you, I work 7:30 to 4:00, so I can't get down during those hours, but John and I do talk after hours, and I do have conversations with the, the
So I just, I just forwarded everybody some pictures, and, you know, what I would like to know is, we have vehicles parked in this garage, and trailers parked in this garage that aren't city equipment, and I, I wanna know what's going on with that, and I wanna get to the bottom of that. You guys all have the same photos that, that I have, so you guys can take a look at your phones if you'd like. I'd like to know whose Volkswagen is sitting in there. No plates, and we also have a black travel trailer in there. I, I wanna know whose it is and why it's there. First of all, it's city property, and employees do not, they don't do anything in the garages, and so that goes for everybody, so I'd like to know, do you guys know anything about, about these, these vehicles? I know the other councilmen don't, you know what I mean, so this is kinda why I'm asking you about, 'cause it's your department.
I do not know, and this is the first that's been brought to my attention, so I will check into it, and I'll get back to you as soon as I find out anything.
So, enough to cut you off, I'm sorry. You know, I've had conversations with the solicitor over, and it's, it is a, it's ethics, which is serious, so you guys all have the photo, the photos of the trailer, it has a license plate in it, and also, you know, this Volkswagen.
This is the first I heard of it, so I appreciate you letting me know, if you would let me know as soon as you knew, but I will, I'm glad you brought everyone's attention, and I will find out the answer for you, and I'll get back to you, let everybody on council know.
You, would you like to elaborate on anything? Like with the council, like what that actually is?
No, I mean, you know, obviously, nobody can use city property for personal use, right? Because it's city property.
Right.
If you wanna, like you said, look into and investigate.
Oh, absolutely.
Take the appropriate action, that would be appropriate next step.
Absolutely, yeah, like I said, I had no idea that was going on, so it's news to me, and I will, I will definitely find out.
Now, what were you talking about down at Dunbar Street?
Talking, well, I've visited both garages, but we're talking down in the sewage.
What, where, on Dunbar Street? Were you talking down at the sewage plant?
Down at the sewage.
I've been there, but I don't, I haven't walked in, I'll make a point. Next time I'm there, I get down to about two to three times a week.
And just so I have an idea, so whenever I talk to these guys, I wanna know, when were you down there, so I could tell them, listen, there was somebody there at this time and this date, so I know, I can say specifically that. I, I don't think that the date that I was actually there, because it was recent, I have a timestamp on, on the photos. The more important thing is, is that we have brand-new equipment that's being parked outside because personal vehicles are being parked inside, okay, so.
This is at the sewer plant, is that what you said?
Well, like I said before, I will find out, and I will report back to council, I'm going to do some investigations this evening. I'll reach out to my Director and find out what's going on, and I will give you guys a full report from what I find out, and regardless of who it is or what it is, it will be addressed properly. Thank you.
Okay, public comment? We need public comment this evening. Robert Crable, I see it, I see you rising.
I just wanted to address this, council, concerning Bailey Park and the two group interests of citizens that want a tennis court in Bailey Park. Back in the early, mid-seventies, tennis was a big interest here in Union Town. Matter of fact, my wife and I played a lot there, Pastor Winfrey played out there, and many others. And what had happened, now this is just letting you know, put pickleball courts in, everything went well. We ran on the honor system, people would come and say whoever lost had to leave the court, and someone, two other players would come on, and it was a good system, everybody got a chance to play. But there was a group of people from, in Union Town, and outside of Union Town, came into Bailey Park, they put up a box with a court time sheet, or, then they would have somebody go down there, like 7 o'clock, 7:30 in the morning, sign up, and the people that had been playing there could not play any longer because they took up all the court time. And unfortunately, they did that until, I think it was a forest park or something in South Union, they built that, and when their courts were done, they moved over there, and by that time, the interest had died for tennis at Bailey Park. And there's not a great amount of interest right now for tennis. Now, there's that, two special groups, you know, but if you decide to do that, where you would put tennis court in Bailey Park now, I wouldn't even know. But what I'm trying to say is, I hope that it don't happen like it did to us back in the seventies, that would happen either pickleball or tennis now. Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, the council adjourns to meet Thursday, September 7th, 2023, at 5:00 PM. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Bisaki?
Yes.
Councilman Winfrey?
Yes.
Councilman Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurkey?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.
That's a wrap.